Time to call the meeting to order. At. Seven oh three. Seven oh one, it says right there. Good, even better. So let's have a call another minute. Regina?
Here.
Tender?
Here.
George here. Uh Mike and Frank are both uh missing tonight due to being out of signal range. So it's a uh we have a forum, but a small. Alright. Alright, have a opportunity to uh to check the meeting minutes for June twenty fourth and also for July eighth.
So. I think my question is answered about July eighth. So as long as it's accurate then, I'm good.
Okay, Regina?
Yeah, no question.
Well, um accept the motion to approve the minutes. So.
Seconded.
All in favor?
I.
Tender?
I.
Regina?
Yes.
And George?
Yes.
This is a nice country one.
Alright, I understand the uh White Pond Road folks have requested a continuance. Um until August twelfth.
Yes, so we received communication uh this morning from the uh applicants. Uh in engineering team. Uh we're all waiting on a few things. Um. They are talking to Bill Brookings, Board uh show boards of health. Uh and they're also looking into some public safety issues. Uh and they're also preparing uh an H O A plan that was requested by this board. And I mean, we are um doing a review of the uh flex development by law. Uh and we had some questions concerning uh their interpretation of that. So hopefully by next meeting, um. I think we will, the board and the team, the applicant team will have a much better uh understanding of whether the status of the project is before the status of the application.
Okay, and you'll shift for August twelfth, that's up for our two members. Thank you. So it looks like we're down to the staff reports.
Uh we have to vote to continue the.
Yes, we have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I made the motion to continue.
Motion to continue.
Zero White Pond.
Uh seconded.
Second.
Could you remind Susan my name?
On the hall of favor? Tender?
Sorry.
Hall of favor?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
You? George, yes. Continued until August twelfth.
Sorry, I think I made that wrong.
These people are taking their money for that.
I know.
That happened for me.
Fair play.
The other folks?
I have a lot of excitement for anybody to me.
What are you doing? Do you want to just continue? That's all.
White Pond.
Okay, staff report?
Yeah.
Ready to move to the phone.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so we start with uh thirteen Neck Road. Z B A. Held a uh public hearing last Thursday evening. Uh a continuing public hearing for thirteen Neck Road, which is the forty V for comprehensive permit application. Uh proposed eleven units. Uh three of which uh proposed to be affordable. Uh so the public hearing for this application has been extended to September nineteenth. This is to give the applicant time to revise the plan with the intention of reducing the unit count from eleven to ten. And the building footprint from three to two. Now just let me emphasize that this is not certain. You know, the uh engineer, the architects were not, could not be present at the meeting. Uh but the uh the owner was present at the meeting and the uh, you know, his attorney. And uh they, it's their intention to look at this. You know, look at this proposed design, but you know, they can't guarantee that something will work. But they're gonna, certainly that's gonna be their intention to uh see if they can get something to work. Uh this will be an attempt to address the principal concerns of the Z B A, which are probably safety related. Such as the driveway uh being too narrow to safely accommodate car vehicles while allowing safe access for emergency vehicles personnel. Uh amongst other concerns, but this uh was seemed to be the principle. At this time, the proposed timeline is for the applicant to submit revised plans to the Z B A at the irregularly scheduled meeting on August twenty second. This will give time for the board to have these plans peer reviewed as well as meet by time of apartments by September fifth.
Can I stop you?
Yes.
I just wanna clarify, when it says this give, this will give the board uh time to have these plans reviewed? Which board are we talking about?
The Z B A.
Thank you.
Yes.
Nope, just make it sure. September fifth is where you.
September, right, so that's the most of the timeline for the.
Just making sure.
Yep. And then that will give um our peer reviewers and our department heads uh such as public safety, the pub- pub- public boards, et cetera. Uh time to review all the um. Comments and responses that come in. Uh this will, we will have, we are anticipating to schedule a special meeting on September nineteenth. It is expected that the Z B A will close the public hearing at this time. Instead of that, the Z B A will render a decision to deny, approve, or approve the conditions. Uh the application at the regularly scheduled Z B A meeting on September twenty sixth.
Any comments?
Happy they got that ball on their part.
Yeah, well, I I mean, I I think it's, the general feeling was that uh consensus was being met. Um and that we were heading in the right direction.
Right, when I I read through the peer review, and it seemed as if there were several items that had been uh that had been brought up by the reviewers but not corrected.
Okay, is it the Haley Ward peer review for the stormwater? Or for the Van Ass associates um for the traffic?
I think. Think it was the Van Ass, I'm not, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I I mean, I can, I think I can point to both of those. Um so Haley Ward, there was some, um there was one or two outstanding items. Uh but again, I don't think there was anything that was a symptom. They had addressed some of those um by the, by the time of the meeting. Uh Van Ass, again, this is where um it's it's the traffic and the and and the circulation through there, especially if all parking spaces are occupied. And 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 if the emergency vehicles are trying to get in and out and assist someone who may be in distress by work, by use of a gurney or stretchers or something.
I I I think the driveway, cause if you look where the driveway was coming off Neck Road, coming back to Center Ridge, it was so narrow that if you had the cars parked in, and then it was also the issue of the trash truck. So I think it was all that, not not to take your mind, but.
No, no, it's 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 the narrowness of the road. And then, and of course, there was some discussion about open space and whatnot, uh you know. Um but I think, you know, we're all, I think we're all hoping, anticipating that there will be some relief from from these revised plans.
It shows to go from from the originally proposed three units to two, is that going to?
Or three buildings?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, again, I mean, that should free up some space for them to be able to, well, then, but we, again, nothing's guaranteed. We don't know until the engineers get to the, and you know, and it was hard for them, they weren't going, you know, I I know they weren't going to invest the money in the engineers to do this redesign unless they knew it was gonna get them somewhere, unless they were, so. Uh so it it it's all unknown, but that that is the intention, like eliminating the third building in the back. Northeast corner. That they would be able to then uh manipulate or, I don't know, what's the word, to uh.
Adjust.
Or adjust the other two buildings that will, you know, get some beneficial project.
I'd be curious to see if they give us an updated traffic study and have that peer reviewed, if they start shuttling buildings around.
Everything, yeah, yeah, well, everything's, right, no, everything, that's the thing, once, this is why the timeline is going on till September, because once they get the revisions, we're gonna give the money back to Van Ass and Haley Ward and our public safety and I D P W, everyone involved, you know, for comments.
Any more questions on that?
Yeah, they did, the most of the issues, I would say, are addressed, there are still a few outstanding, but nothing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh twenty thirty eight Lunenburg Road, the developer and his engineers continue to work with the towns for current road inspector, C E I. Um to provide a baseline for road construction. We are working with the developer to get SWIPs, is anyone familiar with SWIPs?
Stormwater, stormwater.
Yes, yes, so stormwater pollution prevention plans were uh running. And detailed information on road construction, such as where, where, how the construction material was coming from, what's the mixing plan, and a set analysis for the subgrade materials. So that is to say, um our our consultant from C I, from C D I is doing a great job. Um keeping the, you know, making sure that, you know, no more production is gonna happen unless we have this baseline set up, you know. Where is, you know, what are the, what are the plans exactly, you know, there were some questions going out there about uh the stuff base interior, what is the, what are those gravel uh cost like? Uh and there's lots of, and you know, lots of things that have to happen first before we can allow, you know, to inspect, to get them to start building the road. But the same, they seem to be on course, and we're working in a, in a moving forward direction, a direction moving forward. But this should all take place. Uh any questions on twenty thirty eight Lunenburg Road?
Um. We had that um that culling washout last week, on Thursday.
Wow.
Um did anybody notice any runoff?
I haven't heard anything of any, I I think the, from my, from what I understand, the detention basin is, has stabilized to the point where, of course, the detention basin is not receiving water in stormwater yet. It's those temporary basins off the south of the, of the site, uh until they get to go ahead to use it. Uh I did not notice any washout into the road, and, cause they did put up some temporary um road patrol from.
It just feels like everything we, like, said, yes, move forward, and then nothing happens. You know, I mean, I I. They're moving very slowly.
It it's it's all, but we are ready for communication.
It it's good, it's it's not bad, so.
Right.
It's like a cautious.
I'm in, I'm in the post-communication with Bob and Peter and also and the developers.
No, I'm not saying it's bad, it's a, a bad, it seems to be a cautious.
Yes. Uh okay, uh I'm sorry to report, I don't have any new updates on the on lane, I was trying to meet with the uh folks today, um I I met with them, but it's it's a topic to come up, so I I promised to get something surgery on the on the lane.
When I saw no updates, it was like, no news is good news, but.
Well, pretty good, yeah, I mean, I don't think there's a lot, I just, what I was trying to find out was, okay, go ahead.
Well, everything that regards to the road, because it was clarified by Kate that there are no entitled issues for the road, which is why I didn't want to end the report. The road's done, it just has to go back before the town. Now it's in the hands of things that have nothing to do with us. So yes, it would be nice to know any heavy that's been made with easements and the conservation and, and the pump house, but our lane has been traveled.
Yes, yes, our lane has been traveled, and the the issue was the heat and utilities and goes into a private yard, you know, and so there's litigation there.
Yep. Yeah, and the property, from what I understand, has been great, so that's awesome.
Yes, yes.
We appreciate that property owner, if you're listening.
Yes, and um and of course, I D P W has some, you know, fairly serious concerns about the performance of stations and its operations and maintenance. And we're always, you know, those, those are not so directly related to the road that, you know, it shouldn't either will be accepted. Uh. So I, I mean, I, with everyone working so closely together on this, we'll explore it. We'll have, we'll have more um outcomes to report there shortly. Uh McGovern Boulevard Extension, definitive subdivision. Okay, so this is now before the C O S C O M Conservation Commission. Uh the project engineers and the C O S C O M through Brad are working, through our conservation agent Brad Stone, are working out design details around stormwater management system as is proposed for the site, as well as the estimated stormwater uh plans for the building, which is, you know, there are two lots and the post-commercial lots. Uh before the C O S C O M now, a discussion is concerning a burn around the detention lot, access to the basin for maintenance vehicles, and maintaining jurisdiction over future development of lots amongst other items. There are projected forum issues with the C O S C O M over the next meeting, and the public hearing is expected to continue to August thirteenth. Uh which will then require the applicants to request a continuance. Right now, McGovern Boulevard is 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 continued to August twelfth, or I will need to push it up to August twenty ninth? Twelfth, um twenty sixth. So um I will be keeping a close eye on these developments as they will pertain to stormwater, to the stormwater permit and what conditions may need to be imposed by the planning board at such time. Uh so this will continually be updated. Any questions on the, uh, guys? Going a little toward the detail, what the, what's going on there, but.
I'll just watch the meetings, so.
Yes, okay.
But I just wanna clarify, we meet next August fifth?
August twelfth, it's the second Monday, yeah, so it's kind of a delay.
Yeah, we have an extra Monday this month.
Twelve, August eighth, twenty sixth.
Cause I was off too, I thought, I was like, no, it's not the twelfth, it's the eighth, or whatever that Monday, the fourth, fifth.
Okay, thank you.
Uh finally, Zero Hilltop, definitive subdivision. Uh just to remind you, this is the property that abuts our friends at two oh one Hilltop, which is approved. Our department heads met with the developer last Tuesday at a technical review meeting. Uh as we all know, offer developers a chance to come in and present their plans. They had a preliminary meeting, not a public hearing, just to get ideas from s- uh staff, department heads, uh of the best direction to move in. Uh they are working with Willis and Roy, Frank McPotlin, who's been with our boards plenty of times. Frank is working on some planned revisions in response uh to some uh comments that Brad had concerning stormwater, about those protections. Uh some things that were missing from the plans, so Frank is working on those. Um those revisions, and we'll forward them as soon as they're complete. The developer would prefer to connect the town water via um or or through an extension of the water main on Hilltop Road for Hawthorne Lane to the entrance to the site. Uh so I contacted Bethany from Bethany Jordan, who's been working on some of our other projects that we're peer reviewing. Apparently she was the one who was reviewing the water pumping station when it was installed and during that period of time, so she's the natural um preference to to review, to conduct a feasibility study. Developer, uh yeah, so we wanna get a a feasibility, of course, the developer fully understands that if something were to happen via a pumping station extending a water line up Hilltop Road to entrance site, that he would uh be fully responsible for for that cost. Developer is prepared to dig wells of town water by pumping stations, not feasible. Uh developer is working with Bill Brookings, uh board of health. Uh show boards of health on septic design, at this point, the developer does not appear to be willing to develop flexible development uh that would avail in protections for open space. Standard intentions is that it's personal family home, the developed lots would be those at the back of the development. The subdivision backs up to the town home, ports, and land, and the new industrial farm, and that he will personally keep these lots as open space.
Or not taking handshakes?
No. No, I I, he knows that this is going to be a continuing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, not, but I'm saying, like, I would want something like that on order of conditions.
Push it, yeah.
I mean, like, no, I get it, I respect people, but after some of the historical things that have happened, with some of these subdivisions, we're not gonna do anything on a handshake, it's not gonna be in writing.
If I remember right, this was the subdivision we looked at, that everyone had their own well and septic.
And there was a question about the distance.
And there's a huge question about if it will even perk. Okay, especially for that many. And then you're putting your well right next to your neighbor's septic. Which again.
Well, again, yeah, this is, this.
Is an issue. And then the wetlands is an issue, which I really want conservation to chime in on that one. Um I mean, as as teenagers, who would, yeah.
And water.
No one knows we did this, we would go four-wheeling up there, and we would get goddamn stuck and have to get pulled back. I know it gets wet up there. So how how it became dry as we got older, I don't know, but it's wet up there. Yeah, it won't perk, which tells you there's a lot of ledge.
Yeah, weather, place, or else.
Yeah.
Plus, these waters are difficult. Right, so, uh it got, there's a lot of work, there's a lot of work to be um.
Absolutely, absolutely, but I I agree with Tender, there's, everything's in writing, there's no handshake, um.
And especially preserving, I mean, there was that forest legacy grant and all that work that went into that, and I get it. It's private property, they can choose to participate with that if they want. However, preserving that buffer for open space, in my opinion, is super important. I mean, I got kids riding through the 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 conservation land behind my house, and they're literally riding across my property.
We just want the horse, the horse area put in a buffer.
Yeah, it's pretty. Oh, yeah, for, yeah.
You know, so if we're putting in a buffer so the horses don't impact.
Walk over there.
You know, of wetland, should we, you know, for housing and, uh it it seems kind of crazy to me cause I don't worry about the horse as much as houses and subjects and all that going in.
I'd be curious to see what border health says about the well and the septic and the septic and the well.
Yeah.
The wells are apparently are here, they're trying to connect to town water.
I know, but you, but he used the magic word.
Well, no.
Trying.
Pump house. Booster station, those are swear words right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I hate to say it, I'm just being, I'm just being a realist, like.
I mean, you you don't know where you're, the pump house and that is A O H, and then are all those homeowners gonna take ownership, or are we gonna be back in a haphazard situation?
Exactly.
With, we're gonna own that.
Well, and I told that the two oh one Hilltop, there's a pump house up there somewhere, and that's not big enough to handle the capacity for
Uh huh, yeah.
For that potential subdivision.
Right, so I, you know, we'll wait to get back from Haley Ward to see what their study is at, whether this is something that's gonna be feasible.
Yeah. Agreed.
I think that's the biggest challenge, if there's the open, the the buffer to the open space and water.
Yep, there's water.
It's gonna be water.
I mean, you would think it wouldn't be, cause it's so much wetland. I mean, if you think of the two, I mean, if you if you go down Brockman to the two fires that happened down at Manny's.
It was an issue.
You know, we had to have pumpers come in all the way from Townsend
Sure.
to bring water, yet there's water all over the place, but not.
Man did not pumpers to come into Runaway Brook.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I watched that poor man's house burn from my farmer's porch.
Yeah.
He was a firefighter, you know, and I listened to the call, they were bringing pump, that's why I, people call me an unreasonable harder when it comes to water and our fire department's safety. I listen to the calls, I know what a struggle the water is. I don't want anybody to lose their home or one of our first responders getting hurt. Cause water's been a huge issue in certain places in town. As, I like to, like, just, I have with the water issues.
Well, no, actually, I I I've been thinking very much about that too. And we talked recently about the possibility of um of smaller lot sizes to uh accommodate
Smaller houses.
Smaller, smaller, smaller sizes for seasons, et cetera, et cetera. Well, if I remember correctly, at the time when the two acre lot uh was was zoned in, the reason was that we were restricting or reducing the draw on our town water. And so now, uh I I think we need a a more current read from the water department as to what's feasible and and what's not.
Like a full reassessment, I agree.
No kidding?
I agree, I I think it's.
Well, I met with the water department, I did think let's go out and surround them from the water department and uh had, you know, had a good you know, briefing about the situation up there, and but they were the, but they were the ones that did alert me, were standing towards Bethany.
Yeah.
Haley Ward, who would be the best one to know if this this could be worked, so.
That makes sense.
My concern with the water, right now, you know, we're allowed in so much water off the draw, right, for the town. And we have a lot, we're we're being able to play with because the college is down. If that college ever comes back on.
Or gets developed into a big class.
Their grandfather, well, not even developed, if they develop in another way, that's one other issue.
A whole trip.
But if they go back to a college for whatever reason, you know, some weird thing happens, all of a sudden, all the dorms are back in. That water is now back there.
Even the.
We only are allowed in so much draw. It it's gonna put a lot at risk.
Well, then add decam.
So, so.
Yes.
At some point.
Add a decam, that's fine, yeah.
Then add other things that are, I mean, not saying these by any means will happen, but you know, if something else happens somewhere in South Lancaster, it's, I think it's a valid concern, isn't it?
Then you get the sewer.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he's putting septic in up there, so that kind of mitigates that, but, yeah.
Right, right. More correct, that's the fact.
So, second square was in my mind right now.
So we we talk about that, I'll put my septic next year well and see how that goes, okay?
Uh one other point that we did.
Okay.
No, no total chlorified potential there, all right?
Uh he did, you know, he he is aware of the inclusionary zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Inclusionary zoning by law, and it's fully acceptable of that, you know, so he's aware of that whole wire. I think it triggers two units at eighteen, eighteen, uh eighteen proposed units, which trigger two or four of the units. Um I did uh mention, I'm still.
Wait, you said, at this point, the developer does not appear willing to adopt flexible development?
Flexible development.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so that's, flexible development would, um, that that's what we're doing on White's Point Road.
Okay.
That's the one where you can you 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 get a base number of lots, and then you can get bonus lots if you do either go on a full housing move or.
Conservation.
Conservation or the open space move. Uh but uh, you know, at this point, you know, he has his, exercising his on property owners' rights, and this is his plan, so uh again, on the public hearing, it's worked out. Uh so that's it, the only other thing I did want to, and I guess there has been some questions, and I need to follow my sword here. At the beginning of last meeting, I uh neglected to turn on the record button for the meeting, so we don't have a recording for our July eighth meeting, I apologize, I'm very sorry.
It is very okay.
Well, I mean, this is, I I just, you know, and I had it as a note, just don't forget that, cause I like to start the meeting, turn on the things earlier, I just don't like to have it running all, like, fifteen to twenty minutes.
Actually, I could have sworn it said it was recording, but.
Well, but I, the next day, I went home that night, I said, oh, did I get it recorded, sure enough, I came the next day. It was recording for a minute or two, and then I paused it, cause I said, you know, everyone comes in the room, we're all talking, and I just don't, you know, I don't, don't think that's.
Were you able to, but you were able to do the minutes?
I was able to do that, took my notes for the.
Exactly, so. We're good. I'm good with it.
Okay, but again, I think people have been asking for it, looking for it online, and that, well, the public know that, that was all on me, it was nothing. It's territorial, it was, I can't do it back.
I, uh, I noticed, because I I was on Zoom for that meeting, and I was able to hear anyone at the, at the front table, but anyone from the audience was.
That's true, yeah.
We heard other colleagues.
Well, yes, I did hear that one, um, I can say it here, if people were to, you know, one person in town halls said, that people talking around the table, they had to turn down the volume on their computer. But if someone is at the podium, turn up the volume, you know, and that seemed to work. I also see notice that someone seems to have moved the podium closer to the hour, so that hopefully this is working. I'm pretty sure it was, it was back further, um, at the, uh, last week's Z B A meeting. So, you know, hopefully that these things, these adjustments will will work. And it's just be a question of maybe to remind people who are not at the podium or speak, you know, to speak up loudly and clearly, state your name and address, but, uh, it's very important to speak loudly and clearly so that your audio will be picked up.
Well, and when all of us fails, we have this beautiful new room which actually seats more people.
Yes.
And y'all can all just come hang out with us for a little bit, we promise we won't play.
Nice and cool, and we had a concert outside last Thursday nights, you know, we had the concept of, it didn't impede us from, um, holding the meeting, so it was nice.
Very good.
Okay.
Any correspondence?
No, no correspondence, has been received by the planning department. Uh, I think we've covered it.
Cool, then I'll make most of your turn.
Very good.
Seconded.
Hall of favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Meeting is adjourned at seven thirty three.